Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. We've got quite a few visitors here today, so we like that when people come in and attend the council meetings. We call the roll, please.
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. And we're going to start our meeting tonight. We actually have three special presentations, so I'm going to move up to the podium.
Right.
For the first one. And I'd like to call the webs up to the podium, please. Clayton City Council would like to congratulate and recognize Mr. Ronald Webb, 5200 Pebblebrook Road, as the 2022 Summer VIP Beautification Contest Winner. Mr. Webb's house is visible to me. I also live in Valley Brook, so I drive by there every day, and we appreciate the work that goes into the maintenance of your home. Believe me, it doesn't get that way by accident. It looks fantastic every year, and we're just so proud to have you come in here, and we hope that this recognition will be a heavy, heavy kudos to you and keep it up. We appreciate you. Thanks for coming in. Yes, sir. Let's get a picture with you. We award these plaques to our VIP winners, and we also give them a yard plaque for the front yard, so hopefully you'll display that proudly. I appreciate you. I'll be checking. I'll go by every day. I told you. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or if you, we won't take offense if you leave, but we want you to stay, so thank you again. Okay, for our next presentation, we would, we're going to have a swearing-in ceremony for some police department personnel. Chief Hamlin.
Would you like to come up? I've got a short bio from Officer Harris. I should get done about eight o'clock. This is John Harris, and he grew up in Spooner, Ohio. He graduated from Franklin High School with honors in 2019, where he was the captain of the high school football team. From there, he committed to Georgetown College to play football and continue his education in the field of education. After a change of plans, he continued his education for social science, education at Wright State University, and after four semesters, he decided to come to the light and follow his dream of going into law enforcement. I added that for you. To continue his dream, he waited until he was old enough to start the Police Academy at Sinclair Community College, where he graduated this May of 2022. And shortly after he graduated the academy, he was hired by the City of Clayton, where he became an officer on his very first, 21st birthday, August 5th, 2022. Later in his career, he plans on going back to further his education, obtain a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and take my job. In the meantime, he would like to focus on his career as an officer and look out for a detective position if one ever becomes available. He is supported by his wonderful parents, Don and John Harris. If you'd like to come up, as well as the other family members you can, and his grandmother, who have supported him in every step through the process. And he would like us to note that his father was a previous deputy at Trumbull County. Thank you for your service time. And after leaving the Marine Corps, so he has military and law enforcement runs in his family. Mr. Mayor.
Could I have your right hand, please? Mr. of office, the County of Montgomery, State of Ohio. Repeat after me. John Harris.
Hi, John Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of law officer.
The duties of officer.
In the City of Clayton.
In the City of Clayton.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Mr. Harris, have you got the badge? John, have you got the badge? Would you, would you like to pin the badge on?
We'd like to hear it. Can we get a family picture? Can we get everybody? Come on.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Paul Nobell. He has a short bio, too. Lieutenant Nobell grew up in Trotwood and attended the high school there, where he received his diploma in conjunction with the Miami Valley Career Technical Center, where he was valedictorian in 2003. He attended Sinclair Community College until he was old enough to go to the Police Academy. He graduated there as the top academic and was hired at Clayton at the age of 21 in 2006. Been a while. He was promoted to detective in 2009 and served in the Detective Bureau until 2017, where he was promoted to sergeant. He then completed his bachelor's degree through Columbia Southern and graduated summa cum laude in 2020. While obtaining his bachelor's degree, he also completed STEP training, which is Supervisor Training Education Program, Police Executive Leadership College, better known as PELC, and also completed Northwestern Staffing Command. He is presently attending the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Class, which is known as CLEA. Both those classes, Northwestern and CLEA, Northwestern is a 13-week, and CLEA is a 13-month class, so he's done very well. He has his wife Brittany, if you'd like to come up, and his two boys, Carson and Caleb, if they want to come up, too, who have helped support him while he's spent his long hours working on his education over the last five years. He would like to note that his brother Ryan is a decorated police officer in Dayton, and they were blessed to be raised by his dedicated parents. Paul and Lisa, if you'd like to come up. You certainly can. I take that as a no. Who still live in Trotwood. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. of office, the County of Montgomery, State of Ohio. Aye, Paul Nobell.
Aye, Paul Nobell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of lieutenant.
The duties of lieutenant.
In the City of Clayton.
In the City of Clayton.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Brittany, if you'd like to pin the badge?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. We practiced. Would you like to pull family out? Mr. Miss.
You guys, you guys want to come out for a picture? Anyone who wants to get a little.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming in, everybody. Thank you. Thanks again, everyone, for coming in. Thank you. Okay, that was, those were good news, and we have another special presentation. Mr. Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Ethan, come on up.
This young man right here, Ethan D. Long, he is a, I believe, Tri-County North kid, and also kid, young man. Also, he attended the CTC for two years in the heavy equipment class, which I think now gives us seven heavy equipment operation people that came from Mr. Kaufman's class. Ethan had a couple of years as a seasonal for us, and I remember when I got my list of names two years ago as the seasonal employees, I remember Mr. Kaufman said, "You're going to find one guy that's a little squirrely, but, boy, will he work for you." I can tell you who that was. Ethan's a good guy. He's a very hard worker. He's been part of the, of course, a big part of the mowing program. He's mowed the whole city all year, right, last two years with Mr. Ben back there in the corner, and he also was a big part of getting that park prepared and cleaned up and the paving, which is now finished, both of them. So, I wanted to say congratulations. Oh, and by the way, he's single, so ladies, he has a full-time job. Thanks, Ethan.
Appreciate that.
Well, Ethan, we don't swear you in for that position, but we're certainly glad to have you and welcome to our team, and if you need anything from any of us up here, you just let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate, so.
I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that was good news. So, we'll move on to, on the agenda, to the Clerk's report.
You have before you the council meeting minutes of September 15th, 2022.
I'll move for approval.
I think you have to abstain.
I'll move.
Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
Motion to accept as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in, roll call, please.
Bachman.
Yes.
Henning.
Yes.
Gorman.
Abstain.
Merkel.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lieberman.
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes. And it looks like we have no old business, and we do have three items under new business, three resolutions. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R. 102269, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Mega City Fire and Security, Inc., to replace the fire alarm system at Meadowbrook at Clayton at a cost not to exceed $33,653.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we went out to bid because we do, or, excuse me, not out to bid, we did obtain four different quotes for the fire system at Meadowbrook. Unfortunately, our fire system is out of date and malfunctioning at this time, so we find it necessary to replace that, and with the new systems, it is wonderful that we will be able, it will have some additional features that will help with operations.
With the history of the fire, of the clubhouse over there, I think we need a good fire system.
I do, too. Yes, yes, and the AV system's almost done, so I want to make sure that that gets protected, so.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. And the second resolution, please.
Resolution R. 102270, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase one Ford F-150 four-by-four pickup truck from Bow Towns and Ford at a cost not to exceed $45,000 for use by the Service Department.
Randy?
That's me.
But Lane already has one, Randy.
Oh, you're right. We've been trying to get a three-quarter ton F, well, I guess it's an F-250 for, since January, and they still aren't making them. So, we are kind of caving in a little bit for an F-150 four-by-four instead for a service truck, and this price from Bow Townsend, they actually beat the state bid price by $987, so we're going to get it at Bow Townsend this year.
What's it replacing?
The 2008 Ford that I drive now, with holes in it.
Any questions?
Windshields, Randy?
What?
Those holes, are they windshields, I said?
No.
No, they're not supposed to be there.
No.
So, any questions or comments on this?
I just have one comment, and I'm glad you're using local dealers. I don't care which one it is, but it's local anyway.
Sure.
I agree. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor, I just have one other question from Randy, or for Randy while he's up here. When do we start to leave pickup? I've seen a couple of piles along the side of the roads already, and it's going to get worse.
Yeah, October 20. It's on our website. Is it 22nd or 7th? I think it's 22nd this year. Yeah. Wasn't planning on doing the presentation. That's up to Amanda if she wants to.
We can put the presentation out on our social media.
It's been a while. We can put it on social.
22nd is a Saturday. That's when we have Sweep Clayton Clean.
Well, it's the following Monday, then. Yes.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Gorman, thanks for wearing pink. My wife is, my wife is five years cancer-free today, so.
Greg's got the pick ribbon on there.
Okay, thank you. And so, will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R. 102271, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal of and enter into an agreement with Play Care LLC, doing business as Play Care Playground Specialist, for installation of an all-inclusive playground at Northview Park at a total cost not to exceed $179,191.32.
Did you want to say anything about that?
If council has any questions, just a reminder that the city was awarded $80,000 in CDBG funding for this, and then also, City Council dedicated $100,000 of the COVID relief money to this project. This was coupled with our paving at Northview Park, that we got through an ODNR grant, so now we have handicap-accessible parking and new wider paths, so Northview Park is more accessible to everyone.
This is the project we've talked about for a while, but good. I'm glad to see it's finally coming around. I'm going to go to all the parks this week, because I know they, talking to Randy, I know they all got paved, and so.
Yes, they all look very nice.
Yeah, great. Okay, and I believe Mr. Bachman is, was there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Lieberman, and we're going to do a roll call on this, as Mr. Bachman will abstain.
Bachman.
Abstain.
Henning.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Merkel.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lieberman.
Yes.
And Stevens.
Yes. And let the record show, that was unanimous. Okay, that was it for the new business. We'll go to the city manager's report.
Just a couple items for you this evening, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder that Sweep Clayton Clean is Saturday, October 22nd, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and that is on Woolery Lane. We will have the chipper there for brush items, if people would like to bring that. Costumes and carvings will be the Sunday after, October 23rd, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and that's for anyone up to grade eight can participate in that, and it is free for everyone. And then, can't believe it, but Breakfast for Santa, or Breakfast with Santa is on December 10th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and tickets go on sale on November 14th, and there are only 200 tickets that will be sold, and they go quickly, so if anyone wants those, they need to get in for that. So, the mayor and I had a conversation with Mark Gavin with the Power Clean Future Ohio last Friday, and Mr. Gavin was requesting that the mayor participate in a press conference concerning aggregation. Their organization has decided that they would like to help the City of Clayton pass our aggregation initiative here in the city, but if you recall, one of the caveats with that was that the city commit totally to green energy, and that's not something that the mayor and I, or either of us, were comfortable saying that we would do without talking to council. I don't know if it's entirely necessary for the city to participate in what they're doing, but I'll let the mayor kind of tell you what he's thinking about the process, and what they're asking to do is a press conference for the mayor to participate in that, and to come out, just as the mayor, and say that he is in favor of that, but.
Well, as Amanda said, we had a nice conversation with, with Mark, and I was really upfront with him and told him that I'm 100% for the green energy. I think that, I would love to see our city do that. I think that would be, I think that would send a good message to our residents and to people that are thinking about moving here, and people that are thinking about investing in our, in our city. Again, you know, I didn't want to try to make that decision for everyone, because as he said at his presentation here, it may or may not be the cheapest, and I fully understand that, but, you know, I kind of looked at this like, like buying a car. You know, I've never went to a car dealership and said, "I want the cheapest car you've got." You know, I mean, I had certain things that I wanted to incorporate into a vehicle or any purchase, and to me, this, this would just be a very strong, important message out to our, to our citizens. They can, you know, citizens, if they find something cheaper, can always opt out, so I would prefer that we go that way. I think, I won't speak for Amanda, but I think we were kind of on the same page on that, but we didn't want to say, I don't want to say that unless, you know, everyone feels good about this, and that we, you know, that we can move forward as this, so I'd like to open, you know, as a, you know, open up, you know, kind of an open discussion here for a few minutes, and we'll just get the feeling from everyone, and if we feel we need to go further, then maybe we have a workshop on this, or, you know, whatever we need to do, so.
Mayor, I had been contest. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we did not have to make that commitment at this stage, that they were going to go ahead and support our initiative on the ballot without that commitment at this stage. Am I wrong on that?
You're not really wrong on that, but what he said, he was a little, a little bit vague on it, because I think that kind of threw him for a, I think it kind of put a different spin on it for him. He said that they could rework, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but he said that they could, like, rework the questions on it to where we, you know, where we wouldn't necessarily be doing that at the press conference, but, but his, his expectation is that we go with a green, a green initiative. We wouldn't have had to say that on the press conference.
So, because I don't think we are ready yet tonight to commit to that.
No.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm a big green guy and would like to see that happen, but I'm not prepared to commit for Clayton tonight.
No.
But I, I think you could probably do a press conference without making that commitment with, but still supporting our initiative, which is my understanding what they were going to do, and they're going to put about 3,000 into it for advertisement or something. Is that, am I, am I correct on that?
I think you're correct, but again, we, I wanted to, I wanted everyone's input on this, that everyone's okay with this, with this part going forward.
I mean, my whole point of doing the aggregation to the ballot measure was to get cheaper rates for residents. We were told renewable would be more expensive than the price hikes that they have with AES. I'm not in favor in any way right now of saying, "We want to go even higher than what AES increased their rates to," when the point of aggregation was to get it lower, so I would be against it. If you want to speak as mayor in your capacity, that's fine. I would be against it being spoken as the entire city's going to go 100% renewable like they wanted. That is a price increase to residents.
Well, I think that was part of, that was part of our issue also. I wouldn't be, I would not be interested in that either, you get going higher, but the fact is, we don't know what the rates are, and we, and, you know, there, I mean, you see a lot of things on social media about people got such-and-such per kilowatt hour and these things, and that, I mean, I guess that's what our issue was also. I don't want it to be higher either.
Okay, so, I mean, I agree with you there. We don't want it to be higher. My only concern is the gentleman that was here, if that was Mark who talked to us, he said he believed, and I have nothing to back it up, I have no fact sheet, but he did say he believed it would be a little higher, because his quote was millennials wouldn't mind paying a little bit more. I mean.
Kenny, I don't think anybody knows right now.
And I agree, yeah, and we don't have, like, a fact sheet, but he did say, I remember, and I, I'm, I hope I'm not the only one that remembers that, he did say millennials would move to a community and pay a little bit more for, for clean energy.
Yeah, he did say that.
Well, I think he said, I think he said that in the context, though, of a little bit, because that was when I'd asked him about, like, the guarantee for the lowest, and he said that, he said he wouldn't be the lowest. I don't think he meant that in the context that it would be higher than AES now. I mean, I took that, that it would be possibly higher than the, the lowest supplier out there.
In the real issue here, it, so we, we already have the issue on the ballot. They're going to support the pass of, passing of our issue, and therefore, I think, as mayor, you, if you're going to do a press conference, it would be in support of our issue, without mentioning whether, what aggregate we're going to go with, if we go with anybody.
Because the issue is getting the best prices for residents.
Right, and we, we just don't know yet. I mean, there's, obviously, there's a lot of different issues involved, and until we're presented with the information, I don't think we can make a decision one way or the other as which aggregate we're going to go with.
I agree. I agree with both of you on that. I just was saying, when I started, my, when I started talking, I wouldn't be in favor of the mayor speaking on behalf of the city if it was renewable with an increase.
I don't, I don't think he's going to do that.
No.
Just to add into this, my first concern is basically not making the issue more confusing for the person who's going to be voting for it or potentially voting against it because they don't understand what it is. The more things you throw into the mix at the very beginning, people aren't going to know what's, what's being planned or what's, might be forced upon them. They might vote against it because they could be thinking that we're looking at potentially making their bills go up when we're not probably going to do that. But their vote is going to be based on what they're perceived to be, the fact that going with one form of energy production, which potentially could be higher, that that's what they're going to be saddled with, and with that, they're going to say no. So we could end up being on the short end because we're trying to start creating something that's a fine tuning an issue without having the issue even approved yet. My first concern would be getting the aggregation thing passed, then making decisions afterwards as far as how do you fine tune it to bring the best to the public? And, you know, right now Clayton hasn't made any announcement formally, publicly that we're in this aggregation mode. I mean, Inglewood was on the news this past week twice. And, you know, their city manager was on the news essentially proposing or announcing what aggregation meant. And we haven't been in the news yet. So that's my first concern. Essentially, if we're going to have this on the ballot is that we've got to get that issue out so people know what's on there so that's not a no vote because we have no information.
See, it is going out in the newsletter. It's the cover of the newsletter. It is.
Looking at this, and the aggregation, I view this as something different than like a levy or a bond issue or something like, like that. This is something, it is, we're doing this as a potential benefit to the community, but in hindsight, really didn't affect us. Doesn't affect the government. It's one more thing we're going to be doing. I'm not saying that I'm comfortable or uncomfortable with it, but I kind of look as like, this is the first I've heard of, you know, we're putting out there, we'll vote yes on the aggregation. I kind of, and I haven't really seen any other communities. I mean, I know some had it on the ballot in the spring. It, it didn't seem like any of those, not that I was following them too closely, it was just kind of, they were just on the ballot. It was kind of, here, here's an aggregation option, you know, here's the information. Is that the way we're going? Because I, and again, it's not like I'm saying, well, we shouldn't go one way or the, you know, or the other. But I just kind of look at this as, as like, well, is it really something we should be like saying, hey, vote yes on this? As opposed to, like I said, or like a levy or a bond issue, which there were, at those times, we're saying, hey, you know, here's, you know, for police, whatever. You know, we need this levy for, for these reasons.
I can tell you what we're pushing out at a staff level is just information. It's not a vote yes or vote no. It's just strictly what is aggregation? And if you're for it or against it, this is the day you need to vote.
I think that keeps, sorry to interrupt, I think that keeps things maybe at least confusing too.
Miami Township, they passed, and their theme was making aggregation work for you. I mean, that's kind of the whole point of why we put it on the ballot, making it work for our residents to get a better price hopefully, so.
Well, I mean, I have no problem doing the, doing a press conference. But here's what I'm, what my real concern is in all this, is that after speaking to Mark, I mean, it seems like, you know, he's a fine person and great guy and all that stuff. I think he's knowledgeable and everything. But it is a political campaign. And although I do believe it can help us, I'm kind of with Brendan a little bit. I'm not sure I want the government making that, I don't know if that's an area that we should step into or not. But it looks like everyone else is, and our residents are going to wonder, you know, why we aren't. So I'm okay with pursuing it, but my real concern is that, you know, whatever I would say would be taken out of context. And if everyone's okay with this, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll speak. But I don't want to, I don't want to come back into the council the next day and say, you know, try to, try to explain to everyone why it was taken out of context or maybe it could have been, and maybe it won't be that, but could be lumped in with something else. You know, with, with someone, they could put me backed back with someone who's, you know, or wedged in between two people who are espousing nothing but green. And then I think that, then I think it puts a different spin on what we do. That's kind of what my real concern was in this. I, I don't have a problem doing the press conference if everyone is on board with that.
Mark was the one who was here last month. Now that I take issue with it, like I had to ask him twice and still didn't get a real answer of like, okay, why can't we do this down the road? Why do we have to like commit to this right now when, I think at that time it was two months away, it's, you know, this is a big decision. Him dancing around that, I get what they're trying to do and it is a noble cause and something will be event, you know, I think a definite thing's going to happen in the future. But it really just seemed like a lot, not just mine, but a lot of questions that were legitimate, simple ones, he was dancing around. That's a simple of like, okay, if you're looking at this for the long term, why can't you answer me why we can't wait? You know, when, when we get this going. Because yeah, if in a year or two we see like, oh, you know, green is the same cost, maybe a tick higher, a tick lower here. And our residents are like, hey, it's, it's a good thing to get into. We want to get into green. That's fine. These guys felt like, well, you got to commit to it now. And we're going to be vague with you on that. Getting in with it, there are just so many unknowns with that organization here and, and everything. I guess almost that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with just because I see, I could be wrong, I hope I am, but I just see like down the road, is there a potential, you know, where they, you know, they screw something up, they overpromised, underdelivered on, on something, and then we get lumped in with it. Not a huge deal, but it just, and I wasn't sure when you said you guys, who you're talking to, who you met with there. But now hearing it was that organization, it's like I'm just not comfortable with really getting in a relationship with them just yet.
Brendan, I probably know a little bit more about this because I knew him prior. So he called me to ask me to do the press conference. And I deferred to our mayor because I think that's what I should do. And I agree with a lot of what everybody's saying. Don't mistake the fact that, that a press conference by, by our mayor is an affirmation that we're going to go green. You know, we haven't made that decision. And that, and we're far away from doing that. We first of all have to pass the aggregation issue. Once we pass that, then next year is when we make the decision about who or if we select somebody for the aggregation. And the way I view this press conference, which is part of the reason I passed the football to him, is simply the mayor saying, you know, very tight that, yeah, we, and aggregation, and we have to be careful what we say anyway, right? Because if you're at, you know, I'm offending you in a criminal case like out in Beaver Creek. So we have to be careful what we say, but I think if you're very tight on it, I think that the issue.
And honestly, Mayor, I think it's so, I mean, honestly, I think it's so nice that you came to us and are even having this conversation because, I mean, you are the executive. You can go do any press conference you want without consulting us. I really think it's very nice that you spoke with us. I wouldn't see a problem with you going and, you know, stating, "We're doing this to get the best price" and explaining what we've talked about tonight. I know you, I know you're not going to go rogue and say City of Clayton's going to go green, if, even if it's higher. Like I, I don't worry about that. And I honestly feel like the reporters aren't going to do a gotcha type press conference for something like this. I think at this point, the media has done a tremendous job of just getting facts out there. And it would, I can't see anyone I know that, in the media, that would spin this story in a negative way. It's passing aggregation because it's best for residents. You support that. You know council supports that.
I agree too as well. And I think that you're just informing, if you have that press conference, you would just be informing residents about the aggregation, about renewable energy. And that's what people need to know about because some people don't even know about that at all.
Well, I, I agree with, again, with, with doing the aggregation. But you know, to your, to your comment, Dennis, the thing is, I can say that, but they're, they're advocating only green. He's not, he's, he's, he's advocating for the aggregation, but it's also, he's a, they're totally green.
Is that, is that what their 3,000 is going to be spent? I mean, not, look, 3,000 in, in the City of Clayton for, that really is a drop in the bucket. But is that what they're going to be using to advocate green or to advocate the passage of the, the issue? I thought it was for the passage of the issue.
I think it is for the passage of the issue, but they're, they're a company that, their company, his company or his, the folks he represents is only green.
Actually, it's a nonprofit and I'm still, like all of us here, not completely clear on, on what they are. But they're not the ones that actually produce it. I think they're the nonprofit that are going to be advocating for green throughout Ohio to try to get more people in here so it becomes more cost productive. That was my understanding of it, but, but, but all that's in any way saying, yeah, let's, let's go green on this. You're not saying that. So I'm okay with it, but depending on what you say.
Yeah, well, you know, you know how, hey, you know, there's danger in that.
There is, you might want to write it down.
Just give, give the reporters the questions in advance and then.
If you go rogue, I'll give you my card ahead of time.
Make sure it's time delayed, you know. I don't want any live statements. Greg, you okay? I mean, are we okay with moving, stepping forward and see, okay, okay, I have no problem with this, so. All right, thanks, everyone.
Final item for you this evening. If you'll recall, staff met with Northmont Art Club about doing a mural at Meadowbrook. The students have submitted their ideas. Staff has a favorite, but I would like council to give me some input on what you would like to see there.
Which one's your favorite?
The one that says Clayton across the middle with the golf course and the airplane is staff's favorite. They did say that we could amend them as, you know, we can request to amend them. We did have the idea of changing the O in Clayton to our sun symbol. And then in the box, the, excuse me, the trail of the airplane to put Meadowbrook at and then have Clayton.
Cool. And then if they could do like a, make the flag somehow, like have the Northmont symbol?
Oh yeah, that would be neat.
I appreciate that picture and I think it would look great there.
Yeah, I think they, all of them were very, very nice. I think they did a good job on all of them. And we had actually talked to, this isn't final, but talked to the art club as well, that some of the murals that weren't selected for Meadowbrook to maybe paint them in different locations in different parks.
Disclosure, Amanda and I did talk today. You know, there are like 12 paintings or whatever. I think it would be really cool and I'm sure our service department could put up whatever state would be necessary for like laminated art to go up and do like an art trail around the Clayton parks or maybe incorporate some Inglewood parks and Union parks. And then we can have like a art trail for parents to take their kids to. I thought it would be really neat. And I mean, there's so many options. Clearly, they have the amount of pictures to do it, so.
You know, these, these submissions are all great. And, you know, I actually happen to know someone in the art department up there, so I've been up there at Northmont. And, you know, art class is just different than it was when I was in school, way different. And these-
So are a lot of things, Mike.
I know. All better. They're all better. But the art is definitely better. It's a, it's a really high level. There's a lot of really talented people up there that do a lot of different things. And I, I just, I agree with Kenny. I think we should try to, you know, try to utilize that the best we can for them. It gives them a nice exposure and, and helps us too, so. Okay, anything else, Amanda?
That's all I have for you this evening. I'm going to get with Jack on Monday when he's back in the office and we'll talk about when they're going to start.
Is that it? Any questions or comments for Amanda at this time?
I don't know whether this is appropriate now or for comments. I had a constituent talk to me about Hardscrabble Park, met me at Kroger's and, and spent a long time talking to her about it. And she has a concern that there are drug dealers in the cemetery. You know who I'm talking about, chief? And so, you know, yeah, she and, and some of her neighbors had suggested cameras. And I'm just passing this on, but I just wanted you to understand that, that there is a concern that, that there's vandalism and drug dealing in the cemetery and in the park. For what, for your information.
Anything else for Amanda? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll go to visitors' comments. We have two visitors left in the galley. Mr. Earl says no. Any questions or comments? Okay, we're still glad you came. So we'll move on to the council and we'll start with Mr. Lieberman.
I just gave mine, so I have nothing further.
Thank you. Ena?
I just want to say happy birthday to my father next week. He's going to be 80, if he doesn't care that I'm saying it. Happy birthday.
Greg?
Well, I'll beat you on that one. My dad is going to be 94 on Wednesday, so I'm going to wish him a early birthday, so.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the police department, the service department and the fire department for a lovely open house on Tuesday. There was an awful lot of smiling kids running around. As well as thank the premier hospital for Care Flight and the SWAT team from the county. And is it Clayton Trucking? Inglewood Trucking, excuse me, that's what I meant. Okay, but all those who participated. And I don't know the people that brought the horses, but there was a line at the horses. And the police department did a great job on the hot dogs too, Matt.
Also wanted to reiterate that the open house was a great time. My son, Clay, loved it. He got a little spooked in the fire truck when he put him in the driver's seat by himself. He did not like that. He was elevated looking down at us and he wasn't a fan. Wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Powell for his promotion. I've worked with him now for a while since being on council. Great guy, always so friendly. I know my neighbors always appreciated having him around and they still do. He has great involvement in the community and he does awesome. Also, welcome Officer Harris to the team. Met him at the open house the other night. Ron Webb does a fantastic job on his property. I know, like the mayor said, when you drive through Valley Brook, his house sticks out because it's phenomenal. He literally walks around that yard every single day picking up anything, so he does a phenomenal job. And, yeah, the other thing I wanted to say real quick too is early voting does start next week on Wednesday. So if you've requested an absentee ballot to vote for this aggregation, your ballot will be delivered to you on Wednesday. Or you can go and vote in person at the Board of Elections next week or the following four weeks before Election Day. So make sure you vote. It's an important election. And, yeah, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Brendan?
Evening, everyone. First start off, just, you know, you listen to the resumes of the two, you know, the safety officers. I know one of promotion and one coming on board here. You, you know, you see why we're one of the safest cities in McG- you see why we're one of the safest cities in Montgomery County. Also, welcome to Ethan here. Point out my house, and we're not to plow, Randy. Now, obviously, service department does a phenomenal job, you look at the condition of the city and, and the improvements going on, so, you know, hearing Ethan's background, there just, he'll be a great addition to the team. Lastly, it happened, I know the announcement happened right after our last meeting, it's been one of those three week gaps. Congratulations to Jack Koontz, Ohio Business Magazine Top 50 Influential People in the State of Ohio. That's, you know, a huge deal, and, you know, the mayor points it out, many meetings, just of how our staff wears so many hats, and to think of, you know, what Jack is able to do, doing, doing that as well. The growth, the development has, obviously, the whole staff has had a big part of, but Jack's really been the leader of that, you know, and standing firm with, with a lot of things, being patient with, with a lot of things. But you, you look at what he's done, you know, just for the whole, for the, for the long term, not just the last couple of years. I know we're kind of in this stretch, a lot, the work that was done, some, you know, prior is now really starting to come to fruition, and that's going to, and that's going to continue. You know, I know Dayton Business Journal just announced about the trucking company coming in on Salem Avenue. You know, that's, again, something that's been in the works for a while, so just, you know, big congratulations to Jack. I know he's off on vacation, but, you know, he'll get that congratulations, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Just a few comments also. One, I want to mention again, that our, we have a member of Task Force One, Matt Maurer, he's in Florida, is he back yet, or is he still there? He's still there. And Matt plays an important leadership role with Task Force Ohio also, and he's been to many of these issues, and I think that really reflects well on the city, and also on Matt as a firefighter, professional firefighter, and also just as a person. He really does a great job with them. I want to congratulate Officer Harris and Lieutenant Nabel, real happy to have them on. I think it looks, it's really a good thing that there's two, two ends of the spectrum there almost. We have a brand new guy, who was initially sworn in, like Chief said, on his 21st birthday. So, we got, you know, a young guy who's, you know, ready to start his career, hopefully has a long career with us here. He's done a really great job so far, and he's a really nice young man. And then also with Paul Nabel, he has, you know, he's come up through the ranks. He's done other, he's done a lot of things with Clayton, and I think he's very deserving of this, and I'm real proud that we can, that we can promote from within. I think that's just, that's a really good story for all of us. So, congratulations to them. Also, welcome to Ethan on our team. Randy spoke very highly of him, and it sounds like he's going to be a good asset also. I want to mention just two more things. I want to say the open house was fantastic, again. I mean, it was really well attended, it was very orderly, there was a lot of cars across the street, but it was very orderly, and I think that really, again, reflects well on us. There was a lot of people here from, from Clayton, obviously, but there was also a lot of visitors. There was two people that came here notably, I didn't speak to them personally, but they spoke to other members of our staff. One came here from Greenville, and one came from the opposite end of the world, I think Monroe, or someone like that, that they had heard about this and knew someone up here, so they came all the way up here for that. So, I think it really is, it was fantastic. One last thing. I went out and looked at the curb work on our development at Westbrook and Union, so they got the curbs in. If you, I mean, I never thought I'd be happy about seeing curbs, but I, I mean, it's really starting to look like a project, and it's just amazing. So, if you have a chance, drive over there and take a look at it. They're beautiful curbs. And I think Randy said the paving is scheduled for next week sometime, so it'll, once that's in, it'll really start to take shape, so I'm just really happy about that, so. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, Tim?
I'll move for adjournment. Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.